2016 Longmont City Council Study Session to Order. Could we please start with the roll call?
Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Council members Bagley.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Peck.
Santos.
Mary of Acorn.
Okay, let's stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we're going to get to a public invited to be heard, and the first person on the list is Paul Tiger.
Paul Tiger, PO Box 1903, Longmont, Colorado. Recently, a Boulder high-tech firm working on solid-state energy innovations lost its industrial space to a commercial marijuana grow operation. The property owner was enticed to lease to a marijuana grow, understanding that his new tenant could easily afford higher rents. The technology company and its highly skilled and well-educated employees were displaced by bud trimmers. In an area long referred to as Silicone Mountain, now a trade name for a solid-state memory firm, Boulder County has been home to an amazing assortment of high-tech companies. People from around the country relocated here to enjoy the benefits of life at the foot of the Rockies while inventing and innovating new technologies. All good things may now come to an end, or perhaps it's simply time to move on. Our future has gone to pot. The Longmont is next on the list while our city council partners the potential income from weed. While it is possible that Longmont may have a need for pot shops to increase its sales coffers, sales tax coffers in the retail marijuana locations, the product has to be grown somewhere. The council is giving consideration to having commercial grows within our city. Presently, commercial and particularly industrial space is limited to, limited and leasing at premium prices. There is simply not enough space for industry to find a home and expand. One example has been Digital Globe, which moved its headquarters to Westminster when it could not find suitable expansion space here. If our city council opens up the marijuana grow market permitting it in our commercial property sector, we should understand by the examples given that property owners may well adopt the green dream, a loss to technology, innovation, and highly skilled jobs. Semiconductor engineers who want to remain in Longmont may need to retrain to be bud trimmers. This is a letter that mysteriously I wrote on like Sunday in the wee hours, and it appeared in the Monday paper. I don't know that. So it's addressed to you in the third person, or, you know, whatever. I'm asking that if you do decide to lift the ban, I know that, I've heard that you guys are on a weed tour. If you do decide to lift the ban on marijuana here and have retail marijuana, that you not allow commercial grows. I talked about this before as it being a zoning issue. But really what I'm concerned with now is that we're really on an upswing with high-tech. I'm working in a high-tech area, and I'm pretty concerned that it will be taken over by marijuana. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to address council at this time?
Thank you. Strider Binstone, 95117. I just got out of a Martin Luther King Day meeting, so be aware of that. Silver Creek High School on the 18th at 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., and I think I'll be part of the program. As far as Paul's thing, yeah, the marijuana industry, you know, there was a vote in Ohio in November, and there were well-organized people, even Oscar Robertson, who wanted to run it top-down. And they voted against the top-down. Two propositions at the same time. Top-down can get very, very restrictive and dangerous, although regulation is important. Actually, what I wanted to mention, I don't know what's going on with the snowplow. And I know two years ago, there was the flood problems, and so there wasn't much money for that. And then last year, we had a mild winter, so it was, kind of got through. We had a medium snow two weeks ago, about nine inches, and they didn't plow any of the streets except a few of the really big ones. And even those, they never plow in the daytime when the cars are gone, never. And so the ice is still there, and it leaks out into the street. And I had one wreck every day for the first 10 days, which when you're 30 or 40, maybe that's fine. But when I'm in my 70s, it's hard, you know. And I don't, you know, I don't know what the issue is. I don't know if it's policy or oversight, or, but even Main, Arterials, like Gay Street, I bike on Gay Street all the time, and they never plowed it, you know. They maybe did one sweep in the middle of the night, in the middle, but all of the ice and snow is piled there. And we had that little two-inch snow, inch and a half snow last week. You can't see the ice under the snow, so boom, you're down again. Some people get hurt doing that. Just one time in the last 10 days, in the daytime, when the sun was out, and it would have all been gone. And now it's not gone because it hadn't been, it never got plowed in the daytime. And of course, the bike lanes, hey, that doesn't happen. So I'd appreciate it if you consider that, thanks.
Is there anybody else who'd like to address the council at this time?
I'm Richard Yale from Longmont, and I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I would ask you to hold off on making any hasty decision on outlawing industrial hemp. As you know, I'm working on Skytran, and a major part of that, we're looking at, hemp is actually 300 times stronger than steel and about 10% lighter. We would be making the fuselages and the modules for that system, and we're going to end up in worldwide production with it. That's a biothermal process, and you could be growing the three crops a year right here in the local area and processing it in the plant as well as the fabrication plants here. So we need to look at this more carefully before we just outline it. And it's not marijuana. It, in fact, the two crops will cancel each other out. You can't grow the hemp or make it produce more TCP. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Doesn't hemp grow outside? Hemp doesn't need to be grown inside, though, it grows outside.
No, it'd be grown in the fields. It's an industrial crop.
Right, yeah, okay, right. Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the council at this time? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Now it's time for the study session items.
Mayor, the one and only item on your agenda is an impact fee 101 overview, and Joni Marsh is here to introduce.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, Joni Marsh with Planning and Development Services. So as some of you may recall, back in 2014, David Starnes and myself came to council and talked about looking at our impact fees. We have a couple of impact fees, the public building fee and the transportation community investment fee that had not been looked at for some time. State statute has changed in that time that we have not had a thorough review. Council directed us to move forward with that. So we have engaged Tischler-Bice to assist us with looking at the impact fees as they are currently in our ordinances specifically for those two. We've also been taking a look at the impact fees as they pertain to our redevelopment agreements and how we've done some different things with park fee and other fees to make sure that whatever we do moving forward with any changes that we're doing in compliance with state statute. So this evening, we're going to do an overview, or I should say, Carson Bice will be doing an overview of general impact fee legislation, information, and taking questions. On the 26th of this month at a regular session, we'll come back during general business to kind of do another study session with a draft study and some actual details on our impact fees and some of the work that we've done, and answer more questions and take feedback so we can move towards looking to new ordinances, if that's the direction we receive. We also have some work to do doubling back with the developer group that we've initially met with to talk about this project, and also doubling back to Transportation Advisory Board specifically on the community investment fee for transportation. So we'd like to get started in January so that somewhere around the latter part of March, we head into April, which is typically when we update the public building fee and some of the other fees that were on schedule. And with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Carson Bice, who's a principal with Tischler-Bice and has been working with us on this project. And he's going to go through an overview, and this is really an open question and answer session. And if you don't think of a question tonight, please feel free to send those to me, and we'll catch up with you on the 26th as well.
Thank you, Joni. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Carson Bice with Tischler-Bice. And as Joni mentioned, we're going to be coming back to you on the 26th. And we thought it'd be a good idea to have sort of this overview session prior to that so we can answer some of the sort of the basic questions and talk about concepts tonight so we can dive into more detail on the 26th in terms of the actual draft study. A little bit about us, our firm is national, and our experience, we're the national leader in fiscal impact analysis as well as impact fees. We've done more of that than anybody in the country. As you can see here, we've got significant experience doing both fiscal and economic work within the state of Colorado itself. As we get into the presentation, I thought it'd be interesting to sort of set the stage or give some context to sort of the funding arena that we find ourselves operating. And depending on state, or depending on the state, we really don't have that many tools at our disposal in terms of funding infrastructure, okay? We've got things like general taxes, your properties taxes, your sales taxes. We've got dedicated taxes, which can be excise taxes, increments of sales tax approved above and beyond sort of your general sales taxes that go to specific, or go to fund specific infrastructure categories, special assessments, user fees, impact fees, jurisdictional revenue sharing is something that's gaining in popularity. P3s, what we call public-private partnerships are gaining popularity within the country as revenue sources are being constrained. And then we have developer exactions, which tend to be very ad hoc in nature. And, you know, one of the complaints from the private sector is, when we're putting our performance together, we really don't know what we should be budgeting because everything's done on an ad hoc basis, which is one reason why, in our experience, a lot of developers do like impact fees because it does get lend some certainty into the planning and financing of the projects. And finally, we're seeing stormwater and transportation utilities gaining in popularity. You may not be aware of this, but there are at least two authorized transportation utilities within the state of Colorado, Fort Collins being one of them, and I can't remember the second. But this is something that's gaining in popularity. We're actually looking at that as a possible option in Boulder right now, and they're popular in Washington State, Oregon, and there's a few in Texas as well. In terms of sort of the conceptual framework for funding options, you know, an interesting thing to note as part of this graphic is if we look at sort of these broad categories working our way down from the top, special assessments, impact fees, improvement districts, utility rates, property taxes, sales taxes, are just sort of some examples we wanted to mention, that it's interesting that the nexus or that connection between the demand and the revenue that's paid is stronger with special assessments and impact fees. And as you go to your more broad-based revenue sources, that nexus becomes weaker. But then the portion of the tax base that's bearing the burden becomes much broader, okay? Because with property and sales taxes, you know, it has nothing to do with the actual demand for facilities. It's a broad-based revenue source, you know, property tax has nothing to do with what you consume in terms of roadway, parkland, or park demand, that sort of thing. It has to do with the value of your house. Same thing with sales tax, has to do with spending. And so as that revenue base grows, that nexus weakens, okay? And obviously, when you get into impact fees and special assessments, it's just the opposite. The revenue base is very small, but that nexus you create is much, much broader. Also, when evaluating infrastructure financing mechanisms, this is a chart from a study we did in Beaufort, South Carolina. And what you want to look at in addition to sort of the legal ability to enact or implement certain revenue sources or financing mechanisms, is there's four other things you want to look at and evaluate. And we have found that three of those four are pretty much the same from community to community, and those are the revenue potential, meaning that, you know, the revenue amounts are there and the amounts needed and the timeframe needed in order to fund your needs. The technical ease, which gets into implementation. So as you can see here, you know, impact fees typically score negative in terms of technical ease because there are reporting requirements associated with impact fees, which we'll get into a little later into the presentation. At large jurisdictions where we work, a lot of times you actually see an impact fee coordinator position being created, whereas if you just increase the property tax rate or the sales tax rate, administrative or technical ease is very easy, you know, it just goes on to the tax rolls, and there's no real expenditure required. And then we also have proportionality, which gets, you know, relates back to the previous slide in terms of, you know, how tight is that nexus compared to the revenue base bearing the burden? Now, what we find varies from jurisdiction to jurisdiction is the political acceptability, okay? It varies widely. And a good example of this is, and this again is from Beaufort County, South Carolina, the sales tax had a very negative public acceptance, and in fact, at the time of the study, sales tax had filled three different referendums, okay? Conversely, we've done a lot of work in Oklahoma City, and it's probably the most successful city that we've worked with in terms of every time they go out to the general public for an increment of sales tax that's dedicated to a certain area. For instance, they have an increment of sales tax that funds just police equip, excuse me, police equipment, fire apparatus, police operations, et cetera. They're very successful because they do a very good job of educating the public about what the, how the revenue's being used. They show success, and so you can see how all these factors sort of converge and would certainly influence the political acceptability of these different revenue sources. I also think it's important that we delve into the differences between what a fee is and what a tax is. And the reason I think this is important is, in our experience around the country, particularly working with the private sector, usually the development community, is a lot of times they keep, they use the term, "This is just a tax on new residents." Well, it's really not a tax because a tax is primarily for revenue raising. You usually have to have express authority. In Colorado, you know, it requires voter approval. Proportionality is not required with taxes. But with fees, particularly impact fees, you know, first of all, an impact fee isn't a revenue source. A lot of people forget about that. It's actually a land use regulation that happens to generate revenue, okay? The authority may be implied, and in this case, we have an act in Colorado. There are some states where impact fees are collected using home rule. Does not require voter approval. You do have to have this tight rational nexus, and unlike your taxes in Colorado, you don't have any taper restrictions associated with impact fees, okay? So why impact fees? We get asked this question quite a bit. You know, infrastructure capacity, from my perspective, is really an economic development tool, okay? Without infrastructure capacity, you're not going to be an attractive place for industry to come and do business. You're also not going to be an attractive place for educated workforce to come and live, okay? And in our experience, you know, if you don't have those amenities, the housing market soon dries up for the development community, okay? Impact fees also help to minimize what we call externalities, like traffic congestion that a lot of your no-growth folks in the community like to come to public meetings and discuss. You get, you know, this idea of if they feel that growth is at least paying their way from a capital perspective, and again, we're just talking about the capital side of the budget, not the operating side of the budget, that some of these no-growth sentiments can be sort of ameliorated at a, from a larger perspective. As I mentioned earlier, compared to negotiated, ad hoc exactions or development agreements, impact fees do lend some certainty or predictability to the development process. Because of the requirements under most of the state statutes and the fact that it is a land use regulation, it does integrate conference of planning, economic development, and revenue strategies in terms of starting to paint a broader picture of your total infrastructure needs versus what new growth consumes or demands, and really sort of, for lack of a better term, emphasizes the need that you need to have a broad-based revenue portfolio to fund your entire capital budget. And I think that as part of this impact fee process, when we come back on the 26th, you'll see a cash flow analysis. And I think that if you do that type of cash flow, it sort of ameliorates any sort of misperception that impact fees are going to be a panacea and fund all of your infrastructure needs, okay? Without, you know, and never, and negate the need to ever raise taxes or look for other alternative revenue sources. But of course, with impact fees, you need to balance, you know, economic competitiveness. You know, that's something that we deal with a lot with the elected officials, is where do you, where do you stand relative to other communities? We have a lot of information on that that we can discuss with you. So in terms of eligible costs, impact fees are only for growth-related capital. We can't use them for operating expenses. So facilities and improvements required to serve new development, the answer is yes. Maintenance and repairs, the answer is no. Operating costs, no. Excess capacity in existing facilities, yes. And what we call that is a buy-in or a cost recovery. And I'll talk a little bit about those, the methods for collecting impact fees here in a second, which we'll dive more into detail about cost recovery. Improvements required to correct existing deficiencies, no. But there is a caveat. If you have a funding plan in place to bring every resident that's here today up to a desired level of service, you can collect impact fees for a higher level of service. But we can't say, for instance, that we're, as a community, we currently have a level of service of three acres per thousand. Our adopted levels of service are five acres per thousand, let's say. We can't base the impact fee on the five-acre level of service unless we have a funding plan in place to bring everybody here today up to that five acres, okay? So that's the caveat. So in terms of sort of the legality and methodology, as I mentioned earlier, you know, the one-time payments to fund system improvements. Because of the accounting requirements governed by SB 15, which is the Impact Fee Act in Colorado, we can't co-mingle impact fees with your general fund. They need to be accounted for in separate funds. An annual report must be published. Any interests generated by those funds need to be credited against account. And the basic legal requirements that we're bound to meet through the calculation methodology is need, benefit, and proportionality. So the way to think of it is a three-legged stool, okay? The actual report itself basically tells a story of need, okay? Longmont has grown over time. This is where we are today. That growth is likely to continue. That growth is going to generate the need for additional capital facilities. So that's establishing that rational nexus, okay? The need. The second part of that stool is benefit, okay? And the way we show benefit is in two ways. One is the timing of the expenditure. We have to expend the money within a certain timeframe. timeframe. The second part of benefit has to do with geography, okay? And usually, that's not an issue in smaller cities. That's something for large cities and large counties, and the idea being is that we don't collect an impact fee for, you know, a public facility in the south, but then spend that money in the north for which that fee payer receives no benefit. So that's part of that, that analysis that we go through in terms of developing the methodology for each, for each impact fee category. And then finally, we have proportionality. And proportionality relates to measuring the demand by different land uses. That's why we don't have just a residential fee and a non-residential fee. We show single-family versus multifamily. We show retail versus office versus industrial versus institutional, because all of these land uses have different demand indicators in terms of employment densities, trip generation rates, et cetera. So that's how we meet those three tests. And then, as we're developing the methodologies, there's really three ways to think about it. We can look at the past. We can look at the present, and we can look at the future, okay? And we look to the past, we call that a cost recovery or a buy-in approach. And you see that a lot with closed systems like utilities, where you have a wastewater treatment plant that's been oversized, let's say the capacity is 10 MGD per day. We're currently at eight, so new growth is buying into that exist, or that remaining 2 MGD. You also see it a lot with, you know, a newly constructed public safety building, for instance. Say it was built two years ago. You've got a bond that goes out 20 years. New development's going to buy into their fair share of that, that oversized facility. When we look to the present, we call that a consumption-based or an incremental expansion approach, and that's one of the approaches that we're probably going to use for recreation. We'll talk more about that on the 26th. But that takes a snapshot of where you are as a community in terms of your existing levels of service. For instance, you know, how many recreation, or how much recreation space do you have per capita? What does it cost to build new, or to replicate those facilities in today's dollars, with the idea being that we're going to collect this money and we're going to incrementally expand, either through building new recreation space, adding on to existing? The caveat is, we're going to have to spend that money, okay? So that's looking at the present. And then finally, we have a plan-based approach. They tend to be more aggressive. You tend to see those more with utilities and roads where there's an adopted master plan, and there's a funding strategy associated with it. You can get yourself into trouble with the sort of the softer services like libraries, parks, which typically have master plans but may or may not have a, an adopted sort of funding plan with that. And the danger is, is you may get a higher fee, but if growth doesn't occur in the amounts that you think it's going to occur, the general fund is on the hook for whatever you didn't collect in impact fees, okay? And so that, those are the kind of trade-offs or pros and cons that we discuss with staff and elected officials when we're developing the impact fee methodologies, because everybody needs to be educated as to what the risks are with different approaches and what your, your liability is in terms of general fund exposure. We also need to look at the idea of credits, okay? And the idea here is that new development doesn't pay twice. Once through the impact fee, and then again through a future stream of revenue, okay? And that future stream of revenue could be property tax, sales tax, et cetera. So those, and then there's also debt service. If you've got debt on existing facilities that we're collecting impact fees for, we may need to credit back to guard against future payments of property tax or sales tax against the same thing that the impact fee was collected for. We also have to look at site-specific credits, okay? And that, those cases arise when a developer comes in and is part of, you know, a development agreement or some sort of negotiation, they may be proffering, as part of that development, to build part of the infrastructure for which you're collecting the impact fee for. And let's just say it's road, a segment of road that's part of the impact fee collection, or part of the impact fee calculation. You can go about, you know, crediting that in various ways. Usually, it's a development agreement with some sort of provision for either developer upfronts that infrastructure is and is repaid through a future stream of impact fees, or you discount the fees by a certain amount. But that's, you know, that's in the details of the development agreement. But that's the idea behind credits. I thought we should also talk about some common misconceptions from our experience around the country. And the first is that impact fees cover the entire cost of new facilities, negating the need for higher taxes, okay? And that gets back to that idea I mentioned earlier of impact fees being a panacea. And a properly designed fee may come close, depending on the methodology and the circumstances. And I, you know, an example of that would be is if you've got an area that's sort of a virgin land area, and without, let's say, a new fire station, you can't develop, and it's 100% growth-related, it may come close to paying. But again, we have to take into account credits, okay? Then you also have to look at, but what about the O and M costs, okay? Again, we're only looking at the capital side. And from our experience around the country doing, you know, not only impact fees, but fiscal analyses, you know, our experience is that in most communities, the capital budget is only 15% to 25% of your total budget, okay? So it's really, that's the small cost. You know, you build a fire station, the large cost is that annual operating expense. And related to that, post-recession, particularly with police and libraries in particular, we're seeing more and more attention being paid to what it costs to operate the facilities, and folks backing off on levels of service and saying, for instance, with parks, "We're going to only develop our existing park land so there's not a new land component," so, because they're paying attention to the operating costs. Next, impact fees should be based on planning standards without concern for deficiencies. We addressed that earlier. You know, you can't correct existing deficiencies with the fees. We also hear a lot that all developers and builders hate impact fees. We think the smart ones like impact fees because, you know, it guarantees that they're going to have a place to do business, okay? Without the quality of life and the infrastructure, they would soon find themselves having to go elsewhere. Impact fees, I think, are unfairly criticized for affecting low and moderate income housing. And I, that's wrong for two reasons. One is, you know, we've been developing over the last 10 years what we call a progressive impact fee schedule, which is based on size of house, okay? So the idea being that is the house size increases, there are more people, there are more vehicles available, there's more trips, okay? So sort of a curve that goes like this, and then levels off at a certain point. That leveling off point varies from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, but that helps with housing equity. So the smaller entry-level houses typically are paying a lower fee. The second part of why impact fees don't have to negatively affect low and moderate income housing is that you can, in fact, the state of Colorado's legislation is very unique in that it expressly, expressly calls out affordable housing within the statute as being something you can waive for without any caveat like there are in other statutes that say, yes, you can waive low and moderate income housing impact fees, but you have to make up for it with other sources, usually the general fund, because you have to make your funding plan whole, okay? But anytime that you're trying to, you know, meet any sort of economic or affordable housing goal that's in your comprehensive plan, you can usually use that as a justification to either waive or exempt certain fees, okay? But the caveat from, even though it mentions affordable housing, you still have to make your, your funding plan whole. And that relates to the next one. Non-residential fees can be adjusted for economic reasons. You know, there are equal protection issues associated with, with fee reductions, you know, and sort of the simple example is, you just can't say, "We're going to charge residential 100%, we're going to charge office 100%, we're going to charge industrial 100%, but we're going to waive retail," or "we're going to reduce it to 20%," without any sort of rationale or, or, you know, data behind the reason for doing that. So you have to be careful about that. And then finally, you know, sort of the number one thing that we deal with, particularly in Florida, where the home builders have such a strong political backing, is that, you know, impact fees are called as new development to migrate to adjacent communities. And we work in all of the high-growth states across the country, and we have found no empirical evidence that that is correct, okay? Most of what you hear is anecdotal. We even have empirical data from several, several of our Arizona clients during the heyday from 2000, 2007, that every time Queen Creek raised their impact fees, their actual, their permits were even greater the next year. But that had nothing to do with the impact fees. It was the market, okay? There's a reason people want to locate in your community, okay? And so the fact that your impact fees are $1,200 more than in other jurisdictions, from our perspective, isn't going to mean that new, new development migrates. So impact fees in Colorado, I mentioned earlier, SB 15, that is the enabling legislation here. It was enacted in 2001, and I know for a fact, and correct me if I'm wrong, Joni, your public building fee hasn't been updated, or the methodology hasn't been updated since before the act. I don't know if transportation has. I can't remember. It may be pre-SB 15 as well. So we have a new, you know, a new game or a new ball field in terms of what we have to comply with, and so, or a ballgame, I should say. And so, you know, that's one of the impetus's for updating this, and so this will be fully SB 15 compliant. And the act defines eligible facilities as an improvement of facility that is directly related to any service that a local government is authorized to provide, and has a useful life of five years or greater. And that's why you won't see within our impact fee study, for instance, parks and, you know, parks and wreck vehicles. You know, a lot of states, you can use impact fees to buy new police cars, new mowers, et cetera, but we have a caveat in Colorado that has to be useful life of five years, okay? We have very specific accounting requirements. As I mentioned, it allows local government to waive impact fees on the development of low and moderate income housing. So in terms of the process that we've used to get to the point where we are, is, you know, the first step is determining, you know, your existing development base and sort of, you know, painting that picture of growth has been occurring in Longmont, and as a result, you've had to build this infrastructure. It's going to continue in the future, and that's going to generate future needs. We have to determine the existing levels of service, and we do that through interviews with, with different departments and gathering data. Look at the capital needs that attributable to new development as a result of growth. Determine appropriate indicators of demand. And what we mean by that is, you know, what is the demand for recreation? Usually, it's, it's people, okay? With, with roads, it's trips. Sometimes it's vehicle miles of travel. We prefer vehicle miles of travel. It's a better indicator. Evaluate methodological alternatives. In fact, as you will find out on the 26th, we have done the, you know, there have been iterations of the recreation fee that were plan-based, and what we're going to show you is incremental expansion-based or consumption-based because of, you know, the, the general fund vulnerability or exposure using the plan-based approach. We evaluate the need for credits, calculate the draft fee amounts, meet with stakeholders, which we've already had the one meeting that Joni mentioned early on in the process. We will be workshopping this again with the development community, and then obviously, we'll be workshopping it with you on the 26th, and then we'll go to the adoption process. There are two other slides I wanted to share with you, and they're from a paper or an article that Dwayne Guthrie and myself from our company wrote for the American Planning Association. It was called "Next Generation Transportation Impact Fees." And what we try to do, particularly with the transportation fee, and you'll see this in the draft, is, you know, I mentioned earlier that impact fees are a land use regulation, okay? And many people forget about that. And so what we try to do, particularly with transportation, is, is how can we craft that methodology to help you achieve land use and economic and transportation policies, okay? And so this, this is a graphic from, from our recent publication where, you know, in terms of thinking spatially about transportation and land use. And so what we do is we look at what we call these, what we call D variables. And if you look at land use characteristics, it has to do with density, okay? Diversity, both the horizontal and the vertical mixed use, the development scale, and then from a, you know, demographic, socioeconomic characteristics, you've got the demographics, college students, young professionals, aging boomers. All that plays into transportation choices, plays into household size, it plays into vehicle trip generation rates. And then from a transportation and land use characteristics or connection, we look at design, both placemaking and complete streets. We look at designation accessibility, such as connectivity, you know, are you in an urban grid network? You know, are you close to, you know, what's your distance to alternative modes of transportation, which gets into distance to transit? And so I'm sure all of you are aware of sort of these, these shifts that we're seeing nationally, that you're already starting to see here in Longmont, which is, you know, there's movement to the city, both by baby boomers as well as millennials. People want to, you know, live in vibrant urban places. People are more and more eschewing their, their traditional modes of transportation and taking alternative modes. And so how can you craft an impact fee methodology to encourage redevelopment downtown? And that's what we're attempting to do. As you'll see on the 26th, we have a concept called the, the urban redevelopment area, I think is what we're calling it. I may, may have that nomenclature wrong, but the idea here is that because of the density, because of the walkability and accessibility, you get, you get cut a break on the trip generation rates. And that's something that you may want to explore in other areas of the city. We've, we've set up in other jurisdictions what we call transportation exchange districts, where, you know, if you meet certain criteria that are set out, like density, connectivity, et cetera, if you meet all these criteria in a mixed-use development, you qualify for lower trip generation rates, which lowers your fee. And so the fee can act as an incentive or incentivize certain behavior. So that's one of the things that we looked at. And that gets into this, this last slide, which is the progression of thought, particularly as it relates to transit, or, excuse me, transportation impact fees. And so we've, we compare and contrast old-school fees versus next-generation. And I'm just going to cherry pick a few of these, but, you know, the old way of doing impact fees, it was very long-range and sort of a build-out look, where you say, "Here's our, here's our 20-year master plan. Here's all the projects," and you sort of divvy it out over 20 years. Well, a lot can happen over 20 years. I mean, just look at what's happened to our personal communication devices in 20, in the last 20 years. So what we like to do, particularly with transportation, and you'll see on the 26th, is we really want to have a short-to-medium-term focus, because that's what we really know, okay? And you also want to get into, you know, this idea of willingness to pay, okay? So it lets you back into fee amounts, because, you know, if you just loaded everything that you think you want to build in the next 10 years, the fee is politically unpalatable, okay? So what do we realistically think we can build, and what do we think the private sector can burden, okay? So we want to pay more attention to that, because after all, it is a contractual arrangement between you and the developer in essence, okay? And so old-school fees had this suburban focus. As I mentioned earlier, we have more of this cosmopolitan urban revitalization focus, which we call a transect concept. You know, old-school fees were uniform across jurisdictions. You know, next-generation impact fees vary geographically. The old way of thinking was moving vehicles. The new way of thinking is we're moving people. So this is just a sort of a smattering of, of, you know, sort of the things that go into our process, particularly as it relates to crafting the transportation fee, which we'll share with you on the 26th. And the last slide here, as Joni mentioned, we're looking at transportation, and the two components of that are lane capacity as well as intersection improvements, public buildings. One of the things that we've been considering is, do we have a component for the Justice Center? We know that there's some, there's been talk about expanding it, but as I understand it, there's nothing in concrete now. So rather than a plan-based approach, do we want to go with a more incremental expansion approach as a, as a placeholder? We're going to recommend discontinuing fire, because there's no plans for any new fire stations that are growth-related, given our conversations with the department. And then with recreation buildings, we have four components there. We have senior centers, pools, youth centers, and community centers. And with that, I believe we have time for questions.
Do you have any?
Counselor Madge Bagley.
Thank you, thank you, Merrick. What would it cost to hire the consultant to do this?
We're already under contract.
How much is it?
No, it's, I'd say it's $80,000 or something.
So our, our contract is, I believe, $74,000.
$74,000? And what is the timeframe we're looking at getting the information, coming back and actually having the fees and all the information that we just discussed?
So we plan on having that to you on the 26th of this month.
The 26th, that quick?
Yeah.
Okay. And then last but not least, the proportionality, the three-legged stool. What's proportional to? The need and benefit to what we're charging?
There's three, there's three things you need to do. Need is the nexus.
Right.
Benefit is spending the money and the geographic component. And proportionality is making sure the fee is proportionate to the demand. That's why we just don't have, that's why you don't lump retail and office together, because they have completely different trip generations. That's why you have a single-family versus multifamily, because they have.
Got it. I didn't follow that. Okay, cool. Thank you.
Very helpful.
I guess my comment is, I thought your presentation was very well organized and pretty easy to understand, so.
Thank you. I figure if I can understand it, you can understand it.
Yeah. It makes sense to me. Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah.
Oh, Councilmember Christensen.
I'm, I have a question about the operating and maintenance costs, because impact fees really just cover the cost of new facilities. And I'm wondering if that is, why that is so? Because the actual impact is an ongoing operation and maintenance cost, I mean, of everything, and yet, is it assumed that that's going to come through greater sales tax or something like that? Because the truth is that the impact on roads of a new development isn't coming from anywhere, I don't think. And that, that's sort of how cities get themselves in trouble. They build stuff, and then they don't. They build stuff and then they don't have operation and maintenance costs considered into it. And so to me, an impact fee should be more than a one-time cost.
It should.
That's not the way anybody else understands it, I guess.
Right. And impact fees really came out of, you know, if you remember back in the '70s, you know, the federal government gave local government so much money to build infrastructure through urban development action grants and other forms. And as all that money started to dry up, impact fees were sort of born out of the exaction process.
Okay.
And so, you know, you're paying for capital facilities and capital facilities are a one-time expense.
Yeah.
Okay? And so that's just sort of the nature of how impact fees have evolved. And yes, you're right, as, you know, if you're like all of the rest of our clients, the feds have, you know, foisted unfunded mandates on your general fund and you have less and less revenue to fund things with, and so operating considerations are a huge, you know, huge component of your capital plan.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
So when all of that comes together, what also, what also comes into the play is the timing's really important too, because you also have to spend those dollars within 10 years.
Right.
And so you can't hold on to those funds beyond that 10-year period, which is another factor that has to be taken into account as you're looking at all of these.
Right. But we have to think very carefully about how, building something is the easy part. Maintaining it and operating it is the long, hard part of it, you know?
Yeah, so to kind of talk about, so you saw, if you back up on the slide and you see the one, when we talk about, one more, go to the, what we...
Oh, what we're looking at now?
Yeah. So when you look at recommending discontinuing fire, when you look at the existing stations and you look at our development area and what it really looks like, there's not, what they're saying is that there's not necessarily a need for a new fire station because of growth. We may have to move a fire station, but it's not growth-related. And that's why they were looking at discontinuing that piece.
Yeah. Actually, I would like to mention something about those recreation buildings. Other communities actually build community centers, and I think we'd get more bang for a buck if we did the same thing, so that we had what's called recreation combined with senior centers and youth centers in one place. Then it really is a community center and we're building one building instead of three separate buildings that all have, you know, we have everybody in the same place and it's less expensive and really is genuinely a community building.
Okay, well, I don't see any further questions, so thank you very much.
I would look forward to seeing you on the 26th.
All right. So now it's time for mayor and council comments. I guess I'll start. I thought it was interesting, I look at the sales tax rates that all the cities in Boulder County pay, and if you throw a word out of the equation which basically has a very low sales tax, so lowest sales tax, we pay 3.275. The median in Boulder County is 3.548. Boulder, City of Boulder pays 3.86. If you're a food service company in Boulder, you pay 4.01%. I just thought it was kind of interesting that we are, obviously, you're very efficient or we don't give as much service or, but we are, you know, basically 8.2% lower than all the other cities than the median city in Boulder County in terms of sales tax rate. So, you know, maybe when we go out to do some polls in the future, maybe one of the things we should poll is, do people want to raise sales tax by, you know, .05 to do more snow plowing? I mean, I don't know. You know, myself, I haven't had any trouble getting around, but I could see on a bicycle, it could be very difficult because, well, even on Airport Road, when I was making left turn off of, let's see, Nelson and coming up north on Airport Road, the bike lane was just filled with snow, so you were forced out into the traffic for the first 100 meters or so of that road. So, I don't know, maybe, maybe we can do a better job for bicyclists. I mean, I don't think we need it for cars because it's pretty easy to get around in cars, but when all the ice and snow is packed in on the corner or the edges of the roads, it's, is really difficult to maneuver in this city in a bike. So, just a thought. I'm not saying we need to do anything, but I just thought it was interesting that we pay so little in sales tax compared to our surrounding, and everybody's always complaining about how expensive it is here, but I think we do a great job with the little amount of sales tax that we collect. I think we're just doing outstanding. So that must mean we have great employees and great leadership is the bottom line. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'll try to do this without coughing. I did get a couple of people who contacted me about the plowing or the lack thereof. And especially on the sidewalks where you have to cross into the street, to get across the street, if you're disabled at all, it's become very difficult. So if there's some way that we can help with that, that would be great. It is dangerous, especially for those who aren't nimble, nimble and quick. Saw several people slip over the last couple of weeks. I also, for Business of the Week, just want to mention that several new eateries have opened down there at Village at the Peaks, and I think you all should go try them all and report back to me on which one should be the next Business of the Week. I want to thank you.
Pizza Five is good.
Pizza Time?
Pizza Five.
No, Pie Five.
Pie Five. Pie Five we have high recommendations for, so give that a try after or before you go to the movies.
And we even have a vegetarian pizza option. Anybody else? All right. City manager, any comments?
No comments, Mayor Council.
All right. City Attorney, any comments?
No comments, Mayor.
All right. This meeting is adjourned.